Everybody here to the here on July 23rd. And we appreciate everyone that is showed up. It's a packed house. Not really, but we appreciate those that are also tuned in to YouTube. We'll go ahead and we'll start with an opening from Councilmember Carl Ward.
Ronald Reagan made a comment that I think is very appropriate. He said, if we ever forget that we are one nation under God, then we will be a nation gone under. And I'll start with a prayer. Our Father in heaven, we're grateful to be able to meet tonight, to be able to consider the issues and government of Cache County. We're thankful to be able to serve in this capacity. We're thankful for the good citizens which we serve and the good people which we work with. We ask you to be with us tonight as we deliberate and make decisions that will be guided and directed by thy Spirit to do that which will be right and best. And we ask for these blessings in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Will you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that very much. We'll now entertain a motion to the approval of the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve the amended agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Also for the minutes of July 9th, 2024.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the July 9th, 2024 minutes?
Second.
Move and second that we approve the July 9th minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes unanimous. There's no items under the report for the executive, but do you have anything tonight?
Yes, a couple of quick reports. We had an airport authority meeting recently and received a report from a consultant we hired. And he gave a lot of recommendations about how we can improve operations at the airport. I know some of you attended that meeting. For those of you who didn't, I would encourage you to review the report or watch his presentation. The best place, easiest place to find that, if you go to the county website's news page, you'll see the links to the video, his report, et cetera. But as a follow-up to, one of his recommendations was that the Airport Authority Board consider governance and how that gets handled going forward. And Mayor Danes, who serves on that board with the two of us, Carl and I, she suggested maybe having a joint workshop with the Logan City Council and the county council. So I don't know what the right timing might be for that. Maybe the Airport Authority Board wants to have some more discussions about that topic first. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that there may be a desire to have a joint discussion about future governance or the airport. And the report that was commissioned by us has a lot of great suggestions and I think it would be good, I think you would find it interesting to review that.
David, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Was that the same study that we approved through the CEO board?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure there wasn't two different things.
Yeah, that's, we approved some funding for that.
Okay.
So I also wanted to mention the county fair is coming up, August 7th through 10th, and I want to encourage everybody to put that on their calendars and come out and enjoy the fair. We also have the Napoleon Dynamite Festival that is happening this weekend, this Friday and Saturday here in Cache Valley. And I just want to also mention Pioneer Day and how much I appreciate the pioneers who went before and sacrificed so much that we might be blessed to live here in this beautiful community that we have today with our roads and our canals and our farms and our buildings and places of worship and so many things that were established for our benefit. And I hope that we can all go forward with gratitude for what they've done and also with a desire to leave something similar for our posterity. That concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Let's go to 6A, Cache Valley Transit District update. Sean, could you?
I brought my computer for PowerPoint. I changed my line. I was able to give you some handouts, so you're probably all ready for that. Just a brief update then, there are three, aside from the major operations.
And ongoing work from CVTD, there are three main thrusts we're going through right now. One of them is a rearrangement of some routes in the west part of Logan where traffic's really increased, the Meadows apartment complex has added complexity.
That's right.
Another one is we've got an onboard data counter on every bus now, and that pertains to the handouts I'll talk about in a second. Then the third is that we're building an indoor facility and that's progressing on budget, on time, so that's going well. It is the onboard counter that kind of has me interested because I'm a data scientist at USDA and so I like data. But I have examples printed out for both the northern route that goes all the way up to Richmond and back, and I have the Hyrum, sorry, the Smithfield snapshot of that, then the southern route that goes down to Hyrum, and I have the Hyrum snapshot of that. I also copied, printed off a Hyde Park portion, an island in Logan portion, and then that, and then western Logan portion. Is it okay if I set these with you, Micah? And if you guys, if anyone wants to grab some of those and look at those, that's here for you. So these are automatic counters. They're on every bus. They count all day, every day, every route, who gets on, who gets off. We've spent a year kind of qualifying the data, double checking it, and so we're confident that we're in a very tiny margin of error now. If you look at the Smithfield one, there's such a phenomenal amount of data and information we're trying to learn how to deal with it. On that front side, there's that heat map and it just kind of shows when, this is average riders during a three-month period, January to March of this year. And so, and as a time of day. So you can see, you know, Monday through Friday, you got a batch in the morning going into school and work, and a batch in the evening going back home, and then a few riders in the middle of the day, not many on Saturday, you know? But if you're a numbers person, if you flip it over to the back, it shows that snapshot of 20 of the stops that go through Smithfield and the number that get on and off at each one, there is a typo. If you look on the right, the right-hand column, it says off and off, but the one is really meant to be on. Yeah. And so these are total numbers over a three-month period, January to March, that get on and off every stop. So you can divide it by, you know, what, 80 or so, however many days, and see how many get on every day. But a lot, well, we got ons and offs backwards, huh, don't we? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, ons are to the right. And so you can see each stop, the numbers, and some are, not many people get on or off at some, and others are quite heavily utilized. And we're starting to use this data. The first situation that we're using it is for what we call Route 8, which goes around 6th West and 10th West, and then also Route 6, which is in southwest Logan by Ellis Elementary. And in those cases, the numbers at every stop were quite heavy, but the route was falling further behind because of traffic changes. And so we had to make changes, more right turns, less, fewer left. And because we removed some stops, we had to find other stops nearby that could accommodate those people because we had, you know, several hundred. And so that's finishing up, and we've got some positive feedback from that. That's going well. So, anyway, I've monologued really quickly, but are there questions?
Well, I see one stop where a lot get off there in Smithfield, right in front of Skyview High School.
Yep.
So it is heavily used for, by the youth then, or just to get to school.
Yeah, yeah. Especially people that are within a mile where a school bus doesn't get. Hyrum has the same deal.
If they charged a little bit, you probably wouldn't have, they'd be back to the yellow buses, wouldn't they?
They can't. It's folks that can't ride it often.
Okay.
Because they're within that mile, so no yellow bus will come to them. At least in Hyrum, I don't know the Smithfield situation as well. If you look at Hyrum, which is the other handout, I'm more familiar with that town. And yeah, the bus at 7:30 that stops at Mountain Crest High School is filled to the gills, and it's kids that get on between South Cache and Mountain Crest where no yellow bus goes.
Have you reached the ridership that you had pre-COVID?
Yes, pre-COVID, we've surpassed that. Our highest ridership was 2012, and we're getting back to that level. But we're not, we're not quite there yet. Our ridership counting method, it's basically, if someone gets on the bus, it's a rider. And so in my situation, if someone were to get on, let's see, in Hyrum, ride it into Logan, transfer and go up to the university, that's two riders. With our loop route that we made, we have fewer people transferring, so our rider numbers dipped. But that route is actually picking up now.
But it's more efficient.
It's more efficient.
Yeah.
So. There is a ridership counter on the website that you can look at, and it'll say the total number of people getting on each day. It's kept up.
Just curious, 2012, why was that the peak or why did it decline after that? Do you guys, you know, do you have any theory?
We have theories, yeah. So, you know, the economic situation 2008, right, which with the crash and then gas prices went up, so we had jobs down, gas prices up. We've had a few fluctuations since then, but it hasn't been, it hasn't included both of those situations.
So it's because there was an artificial spike prior to that because of economic conditions? Is that what your theory is?
It's our theory, working hypothesis.
Okay.
But also, there was a number of construction, this is something that I, this is anecdotal, but there were a number of construction projects between 2012 and 2016 which really interrupted bus service, and lifetime riders got sick of it and stopped. And they're slowly coming back.
Probably on the west side of town, that's happening right now.
Yeah, yeah. It was, actually, the roundabout by the transit station caused some grief, but it's, it's good. It has to happen. That's it? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
My wife's birthday, so I gotta go.
Oh, okay.
Okay, let's go ahead to pending action 10A, Nautica subdivision, First Amendment. Go there first. We'll wait a few minutes here for those other COG. We've got the public hearings on the COG information, and it'll come later, so.
So I don't have much of an update on this one at this time. We're still working with the applicant. They're still getting us some of the documentation that we asked for, for the road design. We, so we've been in contact with them. We actually just heard back from them today and got a few extra things. My recommendation, actually, I think will probably be another month or so before this is ready for approval by the council, so I would recommend continuing our tabling until it's, until we've received all the documents and I've been able to review, review them.
Okay. While you're there, let's just jump right into Title 16 subdivision regulations.
Yeah.
Are you still waiting on yourself on that one?
No, I'm ready to present on it.
But you've caught up. Good.
Yep. I came quicker than I thought, just based on where it was on the agenda. Do you have the word? Okay. Earlier today, I sent out an email that had some examples of construction drawings that we approved, plus some of the standards that are found within our road manual for those improvements for the council to, just so you can review and see them. If you have any questions about any of those, Matt will probably be better able to answer some of those detailed questions about some of those standards. But what I have today, what I've prepared is a brief review of what our review standards are as development comes in, and provided a couple of examples and what we pull from the reports from within the last year of a couple developments. Generally, this, I'll talk about this a little bit at the end, but our general recommendation for tonight is, if the council, the current ordinance that is in front of the council is, doesn't really address the improvements or exaction requirements, but is more of a process-oriented document that talks about how we, our review of those document, of those documents and applications. But if we wanted to dive into the exaction requirements, we would recommend maybe a broader workshop. But I'll go through some of the big requirements that we have and then answer any questions that may come up through that process. So just real quick, so we put, I put this PowerPoint together just out of requests from the council to talk about our requirements for improvements. So just a quick legal background, so Utah law and federal law allows us to require new development to build out improvements, which are often referred to as exactions. This is Utah law and a couple Supreme Court cases defined what this would mean, so, and how we determine that. Because as you know, taking of property is protected by the Fifth Amendment and the Constitution, that we can't take property without just compensation. Exactions for new development are kind of an exception to that. And so by law, we can exact property or require improvements if there's an essential link that exists between a legitimate government interest and each exaction, and each exaction is roughly proportionate, both in nature and extent, to the impact of the proposed development. And so essentially what that says is, when new development comes in, they cause an impact on our services and on our system, and so we have a right to require a developer to do improvements to compensate for that extra impact that we have on our system. And so as such, we require certain improvements to, as development comes in, and with our subdivision, we require that they submit subdivision improvement plans, and that is also reflected in Utah law as a requirement. And so, and it must meet the standards listed in the Manual of Roadway Design and Construction Standards, as I'll refer to as the road manual, particularly in Appendix A is those standards, but the whole document talks about everything that is required. So the big items that we have is roadway and access, stormwater, other utilities, and then other items that come up for consideration are sensitive land requirements and other improvements that may be unique to the development. And so let's talk about road improvements is probably the biggest one, probably the biggest headache for most property owners to get through, and so I wanted to go into detail about what we require there. And so the next several slides, I'm sorry, it's a little bit small on the screen, but the next several slides will talk about what those requirements are and what the code is states. So what our code defines development as the act, process, or result of erecting, placing, constructing, remodeling, converting, altering, relocating, or demolishing any structure or improvement to a property. So our definition for development is pretty broad. And so within our right-of-way section of our code, it states that roads in new subdivisions or development must connect to existing county roads, private roads, improved state highways, or improved city streets. And also in the same section, it states where land abutting in existing substandard roadway is subdivided or developed, the subdivision or developer must, at the divider or developer's expense, dedicate any necessary right-of-way and improve the adjacent roadway to conform to the standard and requirements set forth in the manual, meaning the roadway manual. The road manual, roadway manual kind of hammers down on this point in more detail. It says that no development shall be approved on inadequate roadways, public or private. Roads along identified access to proposed development shall be required to meet the minimum roadway standard as outlined herein, and that roadway shall be constructed across an entire frontage of the proposed development. And then the next one also talks about this a little bit more detail, that any, this is also from the roadway manual, any substandard roads that provide, that identify access to the development shall be fully improved to the minimum roadway standard, and roadway travel lanes in conformance with Table B6 shall be required on all roads of the identified access that provide service to the proposed development. And then this is the Table B6, where we have indicated certain roadway, what level of service they can provide, and what those dimensions are. And so essentially what the code requires is, as the developer comes in, that they must do improvements along their frontage and along any access, their primary accessway to that development if that access road does not meet standards. They also have to do the improvements across the full frontage of the development, and they have to dedicate any row, any additional right-of-way that would be required. In addition, the code indicates that it's supposed to be at their own expense. And so these were all, most of these have been in place for several years, but all this was, the most recent, it was most recently reviewed in 2001, when the roadway manual was, the updated version was adopted, and that's when the right-of-way section of our code was also, we, was also modified and adopted as well.
Stephen, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
If someone's doing a development and there's a substandard road there, like just a 15-foot track or something, do they then need to give the entire width of a 60-foot road into their development? They can't impact the landowner on the other side and require a?
Correct.
There. They have to do the whole section.
So what we require is that they do their half of the road, as long as it is traversable. And so as long as they can meet the minimum access requirements, and then any additional dedication on their side. So they don't have to approve the neighbor across the street's section or add different shoulders or stuff to their, to that property, but they would have to do the improvements on their half in addition to ensuring that there's proper access. And so for there's like, if there's only like 10 feet or something down a roadway, we may, that may need to be looked at, but generally speaking, it's just on their half. And so a couple of reasons why we require these improvements, and so as I mentioned, we're supposed to, it has to be connected to legitimate government interests and roughly proportional. So development causes increased impact on county streets. So if you go out and build a home out in unincorporated county, that causes an impact on county infrastructure. So there's additional impact. Not only that, but we, you know, we want to have better connected streets, and we want to secure access for the property owner themselves, emergency vehicles, garbage pickup, school buses, delivery vehicles, public works and other government vehicles, and then any other trips generated by the property. One of the reasons why we require that the, that the roadway up to the property is developed is to help avoid inconsistent street development patterns, so going from paved to gravel to paved, which makes it very difficult for plowing and maintenance. And also, if you're developing down a roadway that doesn't have proper improvements, that development is having an impact on the roadway beyond just the frontage of that property as well. And then also allows for better management and maintenance for roadway, of roadways, so snow plowing, chip sealing, and roadway maintenance, and also ensuring the county residents don't have to pay for the cost of improvements. So we didn't require these. Eventually, the county would have to go in and do improvements to the roadways to compensate for the extra development in the unincorporated county. Any questions about the roadway improvements? I have a couple of examples that we'll look at here in a second, too.
Isn't this, in a lot of ways, these kind of burdensome costs that we throw on these, a lot of these people, they start, and these developers and everybody, they start saying, well, then I've got to maximize the lot size, and pretty soon you start wanting, you start getting this huge high density to be able to pay for what's required here, right?
Yeah, and that definitely does happen.
I know in, within cities, they have the same issue. So next thing you know, you got these little tiny houses all being packed in there, you know, like sardines, so they can actually make a profit, you know, in, in what homes they're building.
Yeah.
And so it seems like our own regulations sometimes change even the, really how the country being country and the cities being cities, and even within the cities, it starts changing their dynamics, too, so.
Yeah, and I definitely, I totally understand that concern because in, especially in my previous jobs, that's something that we saw quite frequently, is that somebody had to bring in big infrastructure to support a development, they'd want to maximize that development to the mo, to the highest extent possible. We haven't seen that as much in the county. We've had some developments, but the vast majority of our subdivisions are five lots or less. We haven't, we've seen a few that come in under 10. And so I would agree that this has motivated some property owners that might not have otherwise subdivided to add additional lots in order to fund those road improvements and the...
I've seen that happen, where they just wanted one home down here, but to get that one home, they've had to go and change the zoning and sell off a few lots so they could pay for them to be where they wanted to be.
Yeah, and so that definitely does happen. But I also, on the other hand, one of the things that we see quite frequently is a property owner will come in who will want to build out a development and see the cost of the development, and it's also a little discouraging to some property owners as well. Even, we even had a big developer who recently pulled out because of the cost of the roadway improvements that were associated that would have built in, you know, several, you know, 15 or 20 units. And so I would agree that this does cause people to make different choices than they might otherwise make, but I would also say it probably goes both ways, that you have some people who will develop more and some people who will develop less because of these standards. At least that's what we've seen in our pre-application meetings and applications. So stormwater, I'll hit on this just real quick. I don't think this has been as hot a topic, but our stormwater, we require that each development bring in stormwater plans. You can find, we have stormwater regulations in our Code 1532, which essentially is dictated to protect the health and safety of residents, and then in a road manual, Section 4 has, has all the standards that each development has to meet. And so the three I have up there are kind of a summary of some of the bare requirements, essentially, is that, you know, post-development peak runoff rates, including sheet flow, shall not exceed pre-development peak rates. County-approved stormwater drainage and detention facilities will be required to meet the standard. So essentially, if you develop, you can't push water off onto your neighbors. There can't be additional water coming off your property. So there are an appeal and extra review process for these standards. So there's three different options that an applicant can take. We have a constitutional review body, and so this is found in our Code, Title 17, Section 3. This allows for any property owner who feels like, who claims that there has been a constitutional taking of private real property by the action of the county, may request a review of the final decision in action by the county. So if somebody comes in and feels like what we're asking for violates their constitutional rights, that it's beyond, it's either beyond the roughly proportional impact of their project, or that there's not a legitimate government interest, they can come to the county to have a decision. Right now, the county council serves as that body, but the code dictates that the county council can appoint another body or board to do those reviews as well. They can also appeal the decision. We have a land use hearing officer, and so if they feel like we erred in our judgment of the interpretation of the code, or state code, they can appeal that to the land use hearing officer as well. And then either party can appeal that decision to the district court. And then a property owner can also seek mediation. This would most likely be through the Utah Property Rights Ombudsman, who's an attorney appointed by the state to essentially help property owners negotiate with the government. And so the ombudsman's office has a bunch of different opinions on this very issue that they've already issued. Their mediation or opinion are not binding, however, if it does end up in court, the courts look at the ombudsman, gives quite a bit of weight to the ombudsman's opinion. So we have a couple of examples that I wanted to show of some recent ones that have gone through. And so this is the first one. This is in Sadie Farm subdivision. This is a two-lot subdivision that is located south of Mendon. And you can see they're located off of two streets, 20, I can't remember, one is off 2400 South and one's off 5400 West. So these tables is what's included in our staff report. And so what staff, so development services and public works, will go and review the roadways, and will measure out the roadways to see how much pavement it is, how much shoulder there is, and then compare it to the table, or, and what the classification of the roadway is, and then compare it to the table that we showed earlier, and then we'll create a report. And so for this one, you see for 2400 South, the travel lanes were fine, they met the standard for access, the right-of-way was okay for their level of impact, the paved shoulder. The paved shoulder was okay, but then you look at gravel shoulder was substantial, and the clear zone was also substantial. And then on fifty-four hundred west, there, the right of way wasn't adequate, and the gravel shoulder wasn't adequate. And so within the report, you can see on this plat on the east side on that roadway, you can see the extra hat, dedication hash, and so they are planning to dedicate in order to make up for that lack of dedication to improve the street. And then according to the conditions, they were required to address the other items within the report. Another item that recently came through is Mount Sterling Acres. This was a two-lot subdivision. These lots actually exist, they just subdivided them illegally, and so they came through to do an official subdivision to rectify that, so then they could build on the property. And we went through and did the same report for requirements. This one is a little bit unique because you have this kind of weird triangle intersection that we're working with the property owners in order to fix. Another one that came up, this is one that a property owner wanted to subdivide, but ended up not subdividing because of the requirements and is, but he just recently submitted to still build a single-family home. He wanted to do a one-lot subdivision, or, you know, subdivide it into two lots, so an ag remainder and a buildable parcel. And essentially, his argument was that he would have his home on the south side of the property, next to the paved street, pave in front of that lot, and then in front of the ag remainder, leave the rest as untreated and undeveloped, as remained as the gravel roadway. As you can see, right on the south end of the property, there's our, there's a paved roadway. Based on the standards, having to do the improvement across the entire frontage of the development, staff told him that that's what you'd have to do. He requested to do a meeting with the planning commission to hear their determination. And so the planning commission reviewed that application and found that any subdivision is a sub, is a development. And so even though he didn't have plans to build a house on that lot at the moment, he still concluded as part of this development as defined. And then essentially, under our code, if you were to build a single-family home on the home, on the lot without subdividing it, you'd have to do the same improvements. And so we found that you couldn't use an ag remainder to bypass the county code. So you couldn't just subdivide and keep your little lot so you keep another part undeveloped. And then the other issue that we found is that if a property owner to the north wanted to develop, they would need to improve the frontage of the rigs property, of the rigs property. So let's say this property owner or this property owner, who would have a legal right to develop if they wanted to develop, and we only required this property owner to build out to here, then they would have to come in and do all this improvement themselves. And so because of those reasons, we, the planning commission, there was no official decision, but there's direction saying that they would follow the staff's recommendation for these improvements. And therefore, the property owner never submitted a subdivision, but is currently seeking a permit for a single-family home and we're working with them on that process. And so my recommendations, as I kind of stated at the beginning, is for this ordinance, we're not, doesn't necessarily address exaction standards or development standards, but is more of a review and process, and we still recommend approval. If the county council wanted to review in more detail our exaction and improvement requirements, we don't have any recommendations for today for those changes, but we would be more than happy to workshop with the council to figure out what those changes would be and to make sure that we executed them in an equitable way.
Okay, we are getting close to our other public hearing, but Bryson, could you go ahead and turn those on? Does anyone have any quick questions of Stephen right now? Are we, do you want to take a little more time on this?
I'd like to see examples of the exaction because-
Yeah.
That has the potential that I'd like to understand.
Yeah, and is the, is the new state code required that we change? Like, there's going to have to be changes and improvements to our exaction standards, that's what you're saying?
No, so the new, this new state code, we don't have to change our exaction requirements. It, the new state code just requires a change in process, which are the proposed ordinance. Really what it does is it reverts back to what we used to do, that the state made us change last year. And so we're going back to what we were doing. So that's what the new standard is essentially. There are some more details in the review process, but it's just process that they've changed, not exact, not the exaction requirement.
Also, how about the speed of the process? Isn't that supposed to be?
Yeah, so the, that, one of the big issues that the state had was that reviews were taking too long. And so for, so the other change that they did, and this was more of a clarification from last year, was that for improvement plans or construction drawings, the county would only have twenty business days to do those reviews and then issue them back with our comments. And in addition to that, once we did a review, unless something substantially changed, we can't go back and make major changes to our review comments. So since we can't get down to a couple of reviews and like, actually, you need to do this whole new thing to the roadway, unless they made a substantial change. And so the new state code, in a lot of ways, is written to help protect property owners and to improve review processes. And, but the new, but how it was passed last year was a little bit confusing to implement and was actually not great for property owners. So that's what the change this year was to clarify and to, I think the process now is better for both the county and for our property owner.
Okay, should we hold on to it then? Okay, we'll go ahead and hold on to that and, and talk more about it and get some more details. Let's go ahead and go to the public hearing portion of our county council meeting tonight. And we have the public hearing for the two thousand and twenty-four COG project at twelve hundred east, thirty-one hundred north to thirty-four hundred north. We will officially go ahead and open up the public hearing right now. And is there, if there's anyone that would like to come and speak on that, or did you want to go ahead and share a couple of things first, Matt?
If you don't mind, I would like to just kind of give an overview of what that project is.
And then we'll open up the public hearing after that, so go ahead.
So just as a recap of why we're here, the COG rules, again, this is twelve hundred east COG project. This is a multi-jurisdictional project that will be with Cache County and North Logan. Why we're here is the COG Local Transportation Fund Program Manual requires that any projects that come through COG, if you're going to apply for that funding, they need to come and have a public hearing, especially multi-jurisdictional projects. But any project that's coming through needs to make sure that there's been an opportunity for the public to be heard and have a public hearing, so. The things that need to be talked about, that I need to make sure I share so that it can be on the table for everyone is the general concepts of the project, the estimated cost of the project, and the financial responsibilities of the jurisdiction. So just kind of a recap of why we're here. So this is an area location of twelve hundred east. This first project is within the county and North Logan boundaries. Twelve hundred east starts down by Aggie Ice Cream, goes past the cemetery and continues through North Logan, parts of Hyde Park, and will eventually end its way up in Smithfield. So just kind of making sure that people realize that this is a regional transportation corridor. And here's, here's a blow-up of that area, why the county's involved. As you can see, that small portion, it's, still have not been annexed into Hyde Park or North Logan. There's another blow-up. This project is on the COG prioritization list and the CMPO prioritization list in phase one. So it is a project that's been prioritized through those agencies as putting money and wanting to get twelve hundred east up so that that road can be traveled from Logan to Smithfield. Project is from thirty-one hundred north to thirty-four, thirty-one hundred north to thirty-four hundred north. It's a full reconstruction of that roadway, thirty-nine feet of asphalt, curb gutter sidewalk, includes bike lanes on both sides. Estimated cost of that project is three point five million dollars. County and city match of that is two hundred and eighty thousand. Based on the length of the project, it's almost a fifty-fifty split. North Logan and Cache County are still working that out, and we're working with easements and dedication with the landowners. Some of that area's been dedicated, some of it hasn't, so we'll just go back to that. And that's, that's all I have for presentation, just to kind of make sure people are aware of where that project is and what it is.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and we'll open up the public hearing for two thousand and twenty-four COG project, twelve hundred east, thirty-one hundred north to thirty-four hundred. Anyone that would like to come up and speak to that, please state your name and then share what information you may have. This is where they all round, they all run fast, so. Okay.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. Move to second, we close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Matt, on the next one, one hundred east, six hundred south in Smithfield.
So very similar, this is eight hundred east, six hundred south in Smithfield. County project, or county address would be a little different, it's on that same corridor. Any of you that are familiar with Smithfield, six hundred south is the road that goes past Skyview. Twelve hundred east is up near some of the new development below SV. I did want to at least present what this project is in case we come about it later and still open it to a public hearing, but Smithfield has decided to withdraw their application from COG this year, so. But just kind of showing that this is still part of that prioritization project to get twelve hundred east to go all the way to Smithfield. But they wanted to, they're proposing a roundabout at that location, but because of land-
Up at that intersection, that-
Yeah. Because of land issues and everything else, they, Smithfield's decided to withdraw their application, so.
Okay. But guess we don't need to even have a public hearing then, or?
Still open it if there is any comments.
Okay, then we'll go ahead, we'll open up the public hearing at this point for one hundred east and six hundred south in Smithfield. Again, run up to the microphone if you'd like.
Move to close.
Move to second, we close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Vote is unanimous to close it.
Thanks, Matt.
Matt, thank you. We don't even vote on these, they just have to be presented, right?
That's correct, thank you.
Thank you. Let's then go to eleven A, okay? At this point, with this is resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash fifteen, which is a resolution approving the Elkhorn Ranch Phase Two Round Two, Round Two Open Space Application. Who was going to speak on that? The applicants themselves? Okay, please state your, or actually, we need to have Stephen first, don't we?
I can talk about it real quick.
Just take a couple of minutes and then we'll-
So many of you are familiar with this property. We recently, this is the Elkhorn Ranch Phase Two Open Space Application just a few months ago. The first round of review came through the council and received unanimous support for that, both, both from our open space committee and from the council. They have now came forth with a second round application to talk about the funding and how much money they're requesting. The applicant who is here is ready to talk a little bit more about the funding and the grant matching that they're trying to accomplish through this. And it's important to note that the money they're asking for isn't asking for a hundred percent of the cost of the conservation easement, but more about thirty-seven percent of the cost of the project. And that would include ease, that would include a part of the easement plus the full appraisal and other work that would have to take place. And it's within the budget items that was within the packet today. I, the, one of the main things I wanted to point out prior to the applicant coming up and doing a presentation is that our open space committee reviewed this and gave a positive recommendation on the application. However, they recommended instead of the one, about one point five million that the applicant was recommending, one point one, about twenty-five percent of the total cost of the project. And that rece, the motion, that motion passed four to one of the members present. The committee also recommended that the applicant also seek additional funding from the Lee Ray McAllister Working Farm and Ranch Fund, which is a, and, which is a budget, or which is a grant that's funded annually by the state for open space and agricultural preservation. So I've worked with, one item that would be needed for that is in a letter of approval or recommend, a letter recommending approval by the legislative body or the land use authority for the jurisdiction that that property is located within. And so if the county council sees fit to go with the COSAC recommendation, I believe Mike had put together a letter for the council to review, and it's in the packet that we would recommend considering tonight. However, if the council is okay with just the ask that the applicant is proposing, then the, they wouldn't, we wouldn't need that letter here. They would be fine just moving forward with or as is presented by them. Are there any questions for me before the applicant?
To boil that down, are we saying the one point one million or the one point four eight nine three?
So that's, and yeah, I would say the applicant can probably talk a little bit more to it. So just to remind, this is the property off one sixty-five, kind of located partly in Millville, but between Nibley, Millville and Providence. The applicant is proposing a budget that looks something like this, and I can zoom into that a little bit more. And so they estimate that the total cost of the project will be four million one hundred, or four, four million one hundred thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars. And this green section is what they're asking for from the county. The blue section is a donation from the property owner. The one point nine, one point nine million, almost two million, is anticipated federal funds that they'll receive, that the riverland conservancy is seeking. And so that would make up the total cost of the project. The COSAC committee, after review, they recommended that we only fund instead of the, so this is the overall breakdown. Instead of the thirty-seven percent by the county, they recommended a twenty-five to encourage the applicant to seek the Lee Ray McAllister Fund. And so the council, you have, you have, you have a couple of options in front of you. You could approve what the COSAC recommended. You could approve what the applicant is requesting, or you could approve something else, or not approve it at all. So there's our few options. It is important to note, the resolution that's before, the default we put in was the request by the applicant. And we also put in that those funds would not be issued until we've had a chance to review the easement documentation, which will be partly dictated by the federal grants that they receive. And so essentially, if approved tonight, we wouldn't issue funds until after they have been able to secure the additional federal funds and we're able to get a conservation easement in front of us and a, and an agreement that the county council, or that the county can agree to.
Stephen, could you go back to that budget?
Yeah.
Stephen, who would review that?
So I believe once, if the county council authorizes it to move forward, that it could be handled by the executive's office and wouldn't have to come back to the county council, unless there's certain conditions that the county council would want to review prior.
Stephen, my question about this, this total value, where was the total? It was four, four million?
It's on the right.
Yeah.
Yeah, there it is, four point one million. Where did that number come from?
The applicant can probably speak a little bit better to that than I can. It's, they, they did a, a broker, it's within the document, whoops.
I'm just wondering, was there an appraisal that determined that amount, or is this an estimate?
It's-
That was, that was a broker's opinion.
Yeah, so it's currently based off a broker's opinion, and-
We'll do a, we'll do a full appraisal, or full appraisal.
You will do a full appraisal-
Yes.
At a later stage.
We can't do it ninety more, maybe last night.
So we'll, we'll do a full appraisal as part of our diligence on the project. If we did a full appraisal at this point, it would-
Okay, we're gonna, hang on a second. Okay, we're gonna, hang on a second, we're gonna have to have, we need to know who is speaking and for what. So if you can, let's go ahead and answer these questions again, state your name up here so we have it on record.
Okay. Uh, Gabriel Murray, I'm with Bear River Land Conservancy. So I'm just gonna jump ahead here real quick in the presentation. I think the question being asked is how did we come up with that $4.1 million number? So typically, you know, in the easement process, we would have an appraisal. The challenge with having an appraisal upfront is that we don't have an easement document, so we don't know what the restrictions on the property are going to be. And without that easement document, without really the matching funding, we cannot have an accurate appraisal. So what we've done instead is we've sought out a broker's price opinion to kind of give us an estimate of what they feel the property would be worth if it was listed on the market. We then applied what's known as a diminution of value, which basically looks at if a conservation easement has been placed on a property, how much of that property value is reduced by the conservation easement, because it can no longer be developed. So if we kind of take that highest and best use value provided by the licensed broker, and then we apply what we consider to be our best estimate of the diminution, which is 80%, and that's based on a similar easement that we closed recently, and also based on conversations with other land trusts, we come up with an estimated easement value of a little over 3.9 million. And I'm hap, yeah, happy to answer any questions about that process or why we took that approach.
Thank you, I, I just was curious where, how we came up with the number, where the number came from, and it, I just wanted to be, to be clear, I thought it was presented as if it were a cost, but it's not a cost, it's a value.
What do you mean by that?
Well, it's.
It's an opportunity cost, I guess.
Yeah, it's an opportunity cost, it's not.
Yeah.
It's, it's a negotiated amount, maybe is what I'm saying. It's an amount that we will determine between us. And if, if, for example, that amount is not reached, it doesn't necessarily mean that the deal goes away. It just means that we have to agree with some other number.
Yeah, we're establishing basically what the easement is, is worth. What, what restricting the development on that property is worth. And with various funding partners, they're willing to, you know, pay various amounts of what that is worth. So for example, with NRCS, they're willing to pay 50% of this value. Um, but ultimately, a final appraisal will determine the final value, and that's why this is an estimated value, until that final appraisal has been completed.
Is this, this scope and sequence that you're going through, is that typical? Or it seems like we've kind of skirted from something that is not typical to do?
No, so I would say that this, this is typical, you have to provide a value. So for example, to enroll into the federal program with NRCS.
Just an estimated value?
You have to provide an estimated value for them to essentially what's known as obligating funds or setting funds aside. And then they're gonna pay based on that final appraisal value.
They need something for, to just get the ball going, yeah.
Yeah, and that's really what we're presenting to you.
That makes sense, okay.
Yeah, we're, we're presenting kind of, yeah, our initial estimate of what the, what the property is worth to get the ball rolling.
So they, they make an obligation of 50% of the value after the appraisal, so it could be more than the, whatever amount is on here?
Yeah, so they'll, if, if we're able to enter into that process, they'll look at this value and they'll say, we're, we're willing to pay 50% of that. But we will not be held to that, we will be held to the final appraisal value. So if the final appraisal goes up, we have an opportunity to ask for more funding from NRCS. If the final appraisal comes down, then they'll only pay 50% of that final appraisal value. So it, it has the ability to go both up and down based on that final appraisal.
I, I have a follow-up question, and maybe this question is better directed to staff or someone from the Open Space Committee. I'm curious why there's a difference in dollar amounts between what was requested and what's being recommended. Was there, was there a reason why the Open Space Committee is recommending less than what was requested?
Support, don't keep on attacking.
Uh, Chris Sands, Chairman of the COSAC. So we had, at, at the meeting, there, there were five voting members there. And I got the strong impression that some were wanting to go lower and some were wanting to go higher, you know, as much as the full ask. And I think, I think for one or two members, even the 25% was, they were struggling with at the time or whatever. And so we talked through it. I think it was a conversation with the landowner. Our decision at that time, our recommendation wasn't at all, you know, to take away from the project or the value or anything like that. It's just that, uh, that's the number that we came to. 25% was what was comfortable to enough members to pass it. The, the one dissenting vote in the four to one vote wanted it to be higher. And we also felt like 25% leaves room to pursue other funding as well. The landowner has generously offered, you know, to, to make a donation as part of this, which, which, you know, should be acknowledged and, and, and commended. So there's, you know, with our, with our recommendation, we're leaving a $400,000 plus or minus gap there to seek additional funding from other sources such as Lee Ray McAllister. We feel like the process is such that, you know, if that didn't work out, the applicant could always come back to the county and say, look, here's where we're at. This is what we've been able to accomplish. We need more than the 25% to make this project work. And so we still feel like there's an opportunity to, to work through that. But that's where it landed as far as, you know, moving this on to the council for recommendations. So not to take away anything, but some, some members were not as comfortable with the 37%, and I was concerned we were gonna get there.
So just to clarify, you, you mentioned the donation from the property owner.
Yes.
Was that 600,000, if I'm remembering correctly?
Yeah, a little, yeah, 15%.
4.1 million, if we're saying they're donating, what we mean by that is that they're willing to accept 3.5 million for their.
That's correct.
Rights versus the 4.1 million that they're worth.
Yeah.
So there's not actually cash being handed over, it's just, it's just that they're accepting less than its actual market value.
That's correct. It is a donation, it, under, you know, depending on their personal tax situation, you know, they can take advantage of that donation, so. And I think the other thing, just to emphasize is, you know, at least as we understand the, the process and, and everything, you know, the, you were asking the questions, Gabe did a great job answering about sort of the, the process here and why it has to be an estimate at this point, it can't be a, a valid appraisal. And so it's just premature, it's a cart and horse kind of thing. And, you know, everyone does their best to come to a number that, you know, makes sense, has, has rationale behind it, so.
Could I direct a question to Gabe again? In the COSAC Committee, we talked a little bit about the timeline, and we wanted to move quickly on this because we do have a timeline that you're meeting with the NRCS, as well as the Lee Ray McAllister.
That's correct.
Could you just lay out that timeline for the council as a whole here right now, please?
Yeah, so should we proceed with a Lee Ray McAllister application? That application would be due by August 15th. Oftentimes in that application, they're looking for matching funding or a commitment from another partner. And so, you know, having your commitment going into that process definitely bolsters the application. The one thing that I will note is that they only have a million dollars statewide, and there's been several applications that have been submitted for that million dollars. So I, from my perspective, the thought that we're gonna get more than, say, a quarter million out of that fund would be, you know, I, I wouldn't be applying for more than a quarter million, let me put it that way. I, I don't think we'd be competitive beyond that.
And then the timeline for the NRCS?
Yeah, so then Lee Ray McAllister would be looking to, you know, make an announcement by October. An NRCS, an NRCS application period would be in October. So it would be a tight turnaround time to then submit a full application into NRCS. And one of the challenges with this process is that NRCS does require that we have those committed funds. They don't necessarily have to be available, but they have to be committed to the project in order to apply. So that's why we're seeking your funding first, so that we can then pursue that additional funding in, as part of the process.
So the decision has to be made on the Lee Ray McAllister before you can?
The decision would have to be made by both the county and Lee Ray McAllister prior to entering into the NRCS funding pool.
So would it work for the timeline, let's say, for example, the county council authorized 1.1 million tonight, like COSAC recommended, and then there's a request that goes to the Lee Ray McAllister Fund, but that's unsuccessful. Would it work if the council then were willing to reconsider and add more to that? Would that work with these timelines if they wanted to reconsider their 1.1 million dollar contribution?
I think that would be really challenging because of simply when I find out about Lee Ray McAllister. Being, having, finding that out kind of late October and also having that NRCS deadline that same month, it would be challenging to have that application completed and into NRCS, because I would be coming back to you in that interim, and you may or may not have a, a meeting.
Would that, would that affect the NRCS decision one way or the other if we were contributing 1.1 or 1.4?
Yes, it would, yes, we do have to outline the amount of committed funding to the project.
But did you, did you say theirs would be based on a 50%?
Theirs is, theirs is based on 50% of the conservation easement value.
So that, that's my question is, does the county's contribution, whether it's 1.1 or 1.4, is that going to change the NRCS contribution?
It's not gonna change the NRCS app, or it's not gonna change the NRCS contribution, but it changes the application. And so when we go in and we apply for NRCS funding, we have to have, we have to have designated how much committed funding we have for the project. And so we can't change that midstream, we have to have that down on our application.
Just what you put on the application that would be difficult to change, but it wouldn't change how much they would give or whether or not they would give?
No, not necessarily.
And so is that guaranteed if, if he checks all the boxes and meets all the requirements, is that funding guaranteed? Or is it competitive like the Lee Ray McAllister?
It's competitive like every other grant program. Yeah, there is no, there is no guarantee. But we are confident that this is a very good project, that it meets the objectives of the federal program. And so we are confident that we'd be successful in that funding.
So that, so that's my, my question is, if the county gives 1.1 or 1.4, does that change the competitiveness of that application when it goes to NRCS?
It doesn't change the competitiveness of the application for NRCS, it would change the competitiveness of the application to Lee Ray McAllister.
Okay, I have a question, Gabriel.
No.
The, when I went to a couple of the meetings before this was even presented to the public and passed the bond.
Okay.
And what, what I remember hearing about the conservancy districts, or the, like, the land conservancies.
Yes.
Was that, I, I, twice I heard someone say that it's typical for the landowner to contribute 20 to 25% of the project. And I, I believe that's what I heard at least twice. So is it, is there a typical, like, can you give us an average, what do you see as more or less typical? Cause you do these all the time. Is it, to me, the 15% seems low, but I don't know that, that that's based on what the numbers would suggest.
Yeah, I mean, I will say that at the end of the day, it's a willing buyer, willing seller. So it, it does come down to the landowner and it comes down to the property. You know, some landowners are willing to donate up to 50% of the conservation easement value and take a payment from NRCS. Others are looking to have the conservation easement fully funded. So there is a spectrum there, and, and it comes down to a willing buyer, willing seller transaction. So Joe has, you know, said that he is willing to donate 15%. That's, that's where we stand today.
But there's not something that's more just your app, typical average, they're all different, just so different?
It varies, we, we've done fully purchased and we've also done, you know, fully donated.
Okay.
A landowner does have the option to fully donate their, their property and place it under a conservation easement.
And then when the final appraisal comes in and we put all the pieces together, whether we give 1.1 or 1.4 million, that might change our percentage, even though the dollar amount stays the same, the percentage could be.
Correct, correct, if, if the easement comes in much higher, then, then yeah, your percentage would be lower and then the landowner would be looking to donate more.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Good questions, other questions, anybody?
I'm wondering if, I mean, we're, we're jumping by 12% if we go from 1.1 to the 1.498, which right now is a huge jump. But if you bring in the McAllister Fund and you've got now Cash County, you've got Bear River Land Conservancy, you've got Leroy McAllister, do, do they complement each other on the easements? Or is there gonna be a conflict, or do we know anything on that?
Uh, there will be conflict, yeah. So the more parties that you involve in one of these transactions, the more time they take and the more expensive they become. So we've been actively negotiating an easement, you know, with three parties. And I can tell you that our timeline has jumped six months as a result of that. So when you consider timeline, you also have to consider how much that project partner is bringing in terms of funding and what you're looking to accomplish. But I can tell you that any amount of money coming from Lee Ray McAllister would result in a longer timeline for the project. And more conditions in terms to be negotiated with the landowner.
So do all three of those easement agreements have to be the same?
Yes, yes, so they all have to come to basically a single easement document. And so all parties, so that's why it's a multi-way negotiation. And I can have Matt come up here and talk to you about that, because that's, that's what he's been working on for six months.
One easement.
But it is one easement.
Specifically in it.
What type of exemptions does the Lee Ray McAllister, what do they have that would be different than like what we would have?
Well, I, I think one of those questions is what do you have?
Yeah.
Um, and so that's actually something that I haven't seen, and I do work a lot in drafting these easement deeds. There is one easement deed for the project, right, it runs with the property, it's recorded, it's in perpetuity. And so the more funding partners we have there and the more kind of requirements they have, the more we're mashing those things together and trying to get everybody on the same page, and that's, that is what we do. And we've done it successfully on a number of projects now with NRCS funding and Lee Ray McAllister funding. So we've done it three ways, if we have county funding, Lee Ray McAllister funding, and NRCS funding, then we have another set of requirements, and so it is gonna complicate, make that easement more complex itself and then also make the process more complex.
But you have done with the NRCS and Lee Ray McAllister together.
Yep.
And that wasn't too complicated?
It's, it's always complicated.
I don't, I don't know how I actually answer that.
But you've also done them with participating money, you've done them with three entities before that's participated. I know you have, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Summit County, I think you guys did a big one up there, that all was three different entities that came together, worked together on it.
Yeah, we, we haven't had one in Summit County, I do conservation easements in Idaho, this area of Utah and a, a little bit else. I work with Fish and Wildlife Service Conservation Easements, NRCS programs, Forest Service programs.
Okay.
Kind of all different parts and pieces. But I can say the more, the more funding entities you get involved, which we like, because we need the funding in order to purchase conservation easements, just the more complex it gets, and so the longer it's gonna take, you know, to sort out those things and get everybody on the same page, but also in terms of approval processes, right? So for, if we have county bond funding, Lee Ray McAllister funding, and NRCS funding, I'm not saying that's a bad thing, then we essentially have three different approval processes, plus our own as a land trust and our board of directors to get through in order to actually close that easement at the end of the day. Those are questions.
That's why you get paid the big bucks, so.
I thought of another question.
And you, but you also hold the easement.
Yes, correct. So, so it is another factor.
Holder of those development rights and all those, that even.
It, it is another factor, though. Under the Lee Ray McAllister program, the way that currently is in state code, they will not let a nonprofit land trust hold that easement alone. And so we usually have to set it up as a co-holding situation, and we have to identify a public entity or the state. So Utah Department of Ag and Food on our last couple as a co-hoster of that easement. So we would hold it, and they would also hold it together.
Okay. The question I had is, like, the overall administration costs, the, doing the appraisal and those kinds of things, who, how does that come into the total of what, what everyone is paying? Like, how are those costs allocated?
Pull up your budget.
You just give me a general idea, too. It doesn't?
So generally, we have, there's a couple different ways to look at the values on an easement project. You have what we call transaction costs, right? And so that's staff time, appraisals, property surveys, stewardship fees, title work, legal fees, that sort of thing, right? And then the value of the easement, right? So we've estimated that value of easement, and then we've estimated how much it's gonna cost for all those, those other items. That comes up to that total project cost.
Oh, so it's included in the 4.1 million?
Yeah. So that's, that's why the total project cost is 4.1 million. The easement value was just under 4 million.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to clarify on that, no, not, not everybody's paying for that, but we want the county to pay for those items. So that's how we got to the 1.1 million instead of just 1 million. So, so Lee Ray McAl, uh, I don't think Lee Ray, NRCS, they won't, they won't cover those costs. So we, we threw in an extra 100 grand into the, you know, into our recommendation to, to try and cover that. We thought that was important. And just again, to emphasize that, you all have the opportunity to decide to accept our recommendation or do something different. And so I encourage you to, you know, to think through that and, and do what you think is best. The, the recommendation from COSAC to go for 25% as opposed to the asked, requested 37% wasn't because we didn't believe in the value of the project. And so we, we think it's, it's an important project. I think some members are looking long-term and saying, we wanna do as many of these projects as we can. And so that's part of the thinking, too. It wasn't, oh, these guys are asking too much, or not giving enough, or that sort of thing. It was really just, how far can we spread our 20 million across some really important projects? And this is definitely the first one, and is really significant, we think, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions that you might have? We would invite any other from COSAC that would like to speak. I, we've, or is Chris doing okay? Okay. I should've asked, you want him to speak? Go ahead.
Regan Whither, I'm a member of the committee. As I looked at this, the historical value, the location, it's, it's very rare in this county to, to find this property of this magnitude. I think it'd be a real sad thing to let this get away, because of its history and the location. And we're down the road quite a ways with this. We've got a lot of support. And I'm, I'm, I'm a retired farmer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions you'd have of any? Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and then turn it back to you as a council at this point. It is initial proposal, so. Turn it over to you for your discussion.
Can we have Catherine talk to us about it a little bit, because she's on COSAC committee?
Yeah, I, I would. I think Chris articulated very well, a lot of the, the feelings that were expressed, and a lot of members of the committee wanted to make sure that we were able to stretch our bond dollars as far as possible. As well as Regan just said, this is a rare opportunity. If you look at the map, you've got development pressure on literally every side of this piece of property. So I think those were the, the sentiments that were shared, and so that's the, the arguments for the 1.1 was let's stretch it, but also in Regan's defense and, and others, that there was a lot of pressure on this, on this piece of, of this land, by Nibley, by Providence, by Millville, everywhere for development that's knocking on the door. And so, yeah, it's, it's a rare, a rare piece of, of property to have intact by, and to be in view of so much of the, of the county.
I guess I wonder if it would be possible for us to approve it at the 1.498 with a request to the proponents to still seek the Lee Ray McAllister money.
That's a given.
And then, and then if it is, if some of that money is found, then we could reduce the, the commitment from the county, that we could then apply toward other, other properties.
My only question is, would the Lee Ray McAllister approve anything if it's already fully funded?
Yeah.
I just don't know if they would, if they would entertain it if it's already fully funded. I don't know. Would they?
I don't, I mean, that's, that's.
I, I, I think that's a great proposal, but I don't know if, I, you've had more experience with that.
I think that, that sounds great. Unfortunately, they're gonna look to see what your commitment is, and they're gonna look to see a letter of your commitment. So, so that's, that's the only challenge with that.
I, I think the council could authorize 1.1 million, and also authorize staff that if they don't get that money from Lee Ray McAllister to, to write the agreement at a higher amount. And we, we could also just bring it back to the council afterward.
I mean, like, we could have a contingency, right?
Yeah.
Because I don't know if we necessarily have the time to bring it back to council.
Yeah, you could do the opposite. You could approve 1.1 million with a contingency that it goes to 1.5 if they don't get the other money.
I, I think the difficulty is when it gets to the NRCS application, I have to show that. It kind of goes back to your question, David, and that is, the NRCS funding is, is 50% of the conservation easement if we're successful in that, but it requires the other 50% in match, right? And so we have to show that other 50%, either in committed funds from other programs, or from the landowner donation. And so we have the piece that Joe's willing to donate, and then the piece that we have to, to get in funding, and we have to make all those things match up through that application process from here to.
You don't wanna have two.
Lee Ray McAllister to.
You don't wanna have two applications then, right? What you're trying to tell is, you don't wanna have one that says this case scenario, and one that says this case scenario.
That's right.
Right? Yeah, okay. That's what you're saying.
I mean, I'll, I'll try anything, but.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But NRCS isn't, they're not gonna care if we have in there that the county's contribution is this, and the landowner's contribution is this, and they give half of that, and if our numbers shift a little bit, but still add up to the same amount, are they gonna care later?
Uh, what we're gonna have to have is a letter from Joe also saying what he's willing to donate. And if we can't make that picture whole to the 100% of the easement value, then we can't submit an application. So we'd have to go back and renegotiate with Joe as well.
Personally, I'm sitting here and I see what COSAC is saying, because if we go to the 1.498, just call it 1.5, that's seven and a half percent of our whole bond issue. That takes a lot of money out of there. And going from 1.1 to 1.498 is a steep jump on any budget issue. And so as an initial, I'm just saying, if, if council wants to go to 1.498, I need more time to think about it, because, but I agree, this is an awesome project, an awesome deal, but do we skip other projects when we do this one? I don't know. And when the resolution itself does say under F, whereas the Cache County Open Space Advisory Committee has reviewed round two application and funding requests submitted by the applicant, and has made a positive recommendation that the county fund up to 25% of the total project cost of the conservation easement, or 1.1 million, and then and, and then down at the bottom, it says now therefore the county legislative body of Cache County resolves as follows, in a section there, the county shall fund no more than 1.498. So that's that little wiggle room. And you're wondering, well, do we, do we solidify our 1.1 donation, or up to 25%, or do we go to the 1.49? That's my question is, you know, I, I think that you're looking for something a little more, more, but solid. I mean, we want something, this is what we will do, so that you put that number in there, and you can move on it, you know?
Yep. Yep. And it also has to be enough for the landowner to be willing to do the deal.
And see, to me, they, those, even right there within the resolution, they kind of don't, they're not talking the same language to me.
I think the intent there was to show what, I, I did look at this and helped with it a little bit. I think the intent there was to show that the committee was recommending the 1.1, but the applicant was.
Right.
Was requesting the, the 1.498. And so you would have to change that final number.
So this, this resolution cannot be passed as is. We've got to determine what that is.
Yeah, so the intent, so within the warehouses, we indicated, or I felt like it was important to indicate what the COSAC's recommendation was, but in the, therefore now, the county council now resolves, I believe that part, the council, you can adopt it as it is presented, which currently has the applicant's requested amount, or you could modify the resolution as presented for that 1.1 million. And so I think the council has discretion to make the edit to the resolution tonight, if that's what the council wishes.
That's, that's what we need to, if we're gonna do, but it's up to you guys, you. Can we broker something between the 1.1 and the 1.498? We can. We can. And, and then what it comes back to is then, he's gotta agree as to how much more or less of what, what Joe then will put toward it. So go ahead.
I can't express how happy I am that the bond passed. I mean, this is gonna protect a lot of land, hopefully protect a lot of land in the county. We're losing a lot of good ag land. Ag is still a viable business, and it needs to be protected and preserved the best we can. I appreciate the council concern. Appreciate COSAC and what they've done. Some things I don't agree with, but we'll work it out and, and go from there. So I would like this 1.4 instead of the 1.1. What I propose doing is reinvesting that in as much ag land as I can. There are other parcels out there by me, and I'm being closed in. I, hopefully, I don't, hopefully I don't end up being a postage stamp, but that's kind of the way it's going, unless I can acquire some of these parcels. Sorry about that.
You're fine.
Anyway, I appreciate your help, and I appreciate what you're doing. And the purpose of this is to protect ag land, and, and that's what we're doing. And appreciate your, appreciate your help and concerns. Thank you. Any, any questions? Anything I could, Catherine, your mind's going up, yes?
It's turning, it's turning.
Mr. Furman, are you set on the 600, or, or, you know, are you willing to go a little bit more on that, or is that your final?
It probably is. Probably is. I'm not gonna lose out because of that.
Uh huh.
I would rather, I'd rather have that at this point.
Okay.
I've got family that instructs me also, tells me what to do, so I need to consider them.
Right.
But.
Thank you. I appreciate your thoughts and honesty on that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joan. It's no small ask of what you're doing. I mean, this is, this is a legacy, right? And we're very aware of what you're doing for the county and for all of us. So we appreciate that. We do have the same goal, right? We wanna preserve this, but we wanna preserve a lot. So we're all working together to preserve as much as we can and stretch our dollars as, as, as much as we can. So thank you for working with us.
I understand that. I understand that. And I'm giving up quite a bit.
Yeah.
You got to realize that. I'm giving up a lot.
It's true. Thank you.
I could turn that over, you know? I get calls, I get letters in the mail from people in Salt Lake, you know, we wanna buy your place. We wanna buy your place.
Yeah.
Realtor here in, in the valley came in earlier in the summer and says, I've got a, a client that's quite well-to-do, and they, they'd like to buy your place. All of it, just the way it is. And I didn't, I didn't ask her how much, you know, they're willing to pay, but I, I did say that they didn't have enough money to buy it. So that's where we're at with that. But it, it is a priceless piece of property, I know, and I want to protect it.
Right.
I've felt that way ever since as a little kid. So we'll do what we can.
Thank you.
I appreciate your concern. Thanks. Dave?
Uh, Mr. Furman, I, I really love the idea of you using this money to reinvest and buy other land around you. Thank you for being willing to do that. This, your piece, when, when we were advocating for this open space bond, your piece was the example I used, and that I shared with people, of the type of, of land we should preserve, because it's a beautiful place, it has the river running through it, it's right in the middle of our valley, bordering several cities. And thank you so much for being willing to participate. You, you don't have any obligation to tell us what you're gonna do with, with the money that, that you get as part of this. I appreciate you sharing your desire. And you don't have to answer this question, too, but I'm curious, are you, are you planning to spend all of that money on, on land acquisition? Because, because if so, I would advocate we give you even more money.
Well, I might, I might be a little frivolous. I'm not gonna tell you how much, whatever I'm gonna do, but I could be.
Three Pepsis in one day instead of one, right? Well, we appreciate that. What can we?
Can I give my thoughts?
Please.
And as I'm putting this all together, we obviously wanna preserve this land. Like, this is a great opportunity for us, but we also wanna preserve as much of our money as we can. If we approve the 1.4 tonight, that precludes asking Lee Ray McAllister for any money, right? And so to me, it would be better to approve the 1.1.
Probably doesn't preclude, but it is useless.
If it's 1.4, then why would they?
Yeah, why would they answer us?
Why would they look at the application?
Exactly.
So if we give that a chance, and even if they say no, we're not gonna lose the, the project, we can still figure out a way to, to make up the gap. But I think we gotta give it that chance, so that we can preserve as much of our open space bond as we can. But that's just what, where my mind is going. I don't know if I can be persuaded to be, to feel differently, though, if everyone wants to do something different tonight, but.
So if we cut that shorter, are you saying you're voting along with COSAC?
Yeah, I would, I would support COSAC tonight.
That's where I'm at.
And not, and, and if it takes more money to, to keep this project, we can still do that. I don't wanna lose the project. But I also think that if we can take advantage of those other funds, it's better for the valley.
Yeah, I don't wanna jump at the 1, I'm gonna call it 1.5. Without having explored other alternatives and given it a possibility. I mean, if we do 1.1 and it doesn't go through, we can always come back and talk.
Yeah, and if we pass it tonight, that gives them a chance to quickly apply for the Lee Ray McAllister funds, and then we'll know right away. And then even, I think the way this resolution is written, that we, we will give no more than 1.498, it gives us, it does give us that wiggle room to say, you know, we can do some negotiations, maybe with the executive or something, and maybe it doesn't have to come back to the whole council if the. come back to the whole council if the Lee Ray McAllister fund does not come through. Does, and I don't know, and I don't know if I even, I don't know if I understand that correctly, I'm just, that's where my thoughts are.
The comments?
I support, I think that, the only thing we need to make sure that we don't run into is a timing problem in being able to complete everything.
Is Lee Ray the only other option out there?
Between now and October?
Yes, for, for this project, yeah. Yeah, there are no other major sources of funding for this project.
There's no chance of Bear River and Cache County negotiating as we hear that Mr. Furman isn't, so that's all set there too?
In terms of?
Splitting the difference of what the county is being asked of right now.
Would, would Mr. Furman be open to splitting the difference between the two?
No, so I'm just looking, are there any other possibilities of finding other money?
Lee Ray would be the best option.
Okay.
Private donations can't be accepted.
Private donations, thanks, Joe.
Yes.
Yeah.
You're feeling generous.
We got a plate, we can pass around.
You know, we can, we can raise some funds from, from this, this county council, so.
How about the Nolan Gennel Foundation?
Yes, we could, we could initiate that, that is, that's a possibility.
I'm in trouble getting money for myself, so.
So I think what this is really gonna require is a lot of communication between Joe and his agents and the council to make sure we don't miss this application deadline.
Yeah, we would, it'll just be, yeah, kind of tight.
If that requires us to come in and, and have a special, you know.
Council meeting or something.
Council meeting, then that may require that, so, because we don't, time is of the essence. Joe looks like a spring chicken, but might not be quite a spring chicken.
Always.
I mean, we want to make sure that we can get this as quickly as possible because this is something that he feels strongly about getting this application cycle, right?
Well, he was gonna be frivolous, so we don't want that to stop us either, so.
I'm, I'm leaning more up for the up to 1.498. Why I say that, and I say up to, and, which then does draw the line, and I think it'll also actually have a bearing on, on maybe be able to make sure we get some money from Lee Ray McAllister. I think that was, that's a stronger ask and option to possibly get, get that taken care of with a few arm twisting and asking in some favors and a few things like that, which I know, I hear some people are real good at. But I think that that's a, a, a great option, plus I think, I will, will say that that kind of is our deadline point. I am, I think we are the deciding body on this. I don't want to just turn it over for a, a negotiation just between others. I think we are the negotiating factor on this, is how it's written up. And I'm, I'm in favor of actually just go ahead and passing that at 1.498 and 53.
Thank you, David. I'd like to say that I agree with you. I've been listening to everything and I was a big proponent of the open space and I totally agree that we should go ahead with the full amount and do what needs to be done and, and Mr. Furman, thank you.
Thank you.
That's my thoughts.
It's initial, but so we would have to suspend the rules for a motion?
If we do the whole 1.498 though, then they wouldn't even need to apply to Lee Ray McAllister.
No, they would, they encourage you still apply to Lee Ray McAllister, right?
Are you, so are you, are you approving one? It's not fully funded, the landowner is still making a donation.
If we approve up to 1.4, you will still apply for Lee Ray McAllister.
Yeah, if it's up to.
Definitely.
So you're, you're making a 1.1 up to 1.498, so we would go to Lee Ray McAllister with 1.1.
Yep, that works.
Have committed and then.
You're following the verbiage of the resolution with 1.1.
Take the resolution as written.
Exactly.
Okay. So then we wouldn't have to have a special council? If, if they don't get Lee Ray McAllister, then it would go up to the 1.498, is that what you're saying, Dave?
I can't say that because you still don't know what's gonna happen in between.
I'm kind of confused then.
Well, no.
It's just a cap.
Yeah, that's the cap, but they may come back and it, I mean, like they mentioned, they, there's a lot of negotiations still to happen. By the time they get, you know, the Land Conservancy, you get Joe, all of them, by the time you pull all the monies together to make this thing actually work, I think they'll do it, but I'm saying more than likely, they, they may be coming back and say, you know what, no, we don't need all your money.
So the commitment letter that we're putting to, well, the letter of encouragement or whatever that we're submitting to Lee Ray McAllister, are we just putting 1.1?
It'll be from 1.1 up to 1.498.
That, you can use that verbiage?
But, but I don't feel like that puts us in a strong position to get their money.
Yeah, that's telling.
Because that's, that's us telling them, if you don't give us anything, we'll just pay the rest. You know, I don't feel like that puts us in a position to really negotiate with them.
What are your thoughts?
So.
Then, then they're not writing the application very well then, and I, but I think they will.
What if, what if you go to, I don't, I don't remember the numbers, Gibbs, I've been working on it more than I have. So I feel like the most that we would feel comfortable asking Lee Ray McAllister for is probably $250,000, right? Potentially not the full $400,000, or that's what we would likely get.
No, I could stand that.
So what if we do the?
What if we went to 1.25?
250 from the 1.498?
We're at 1, 1 million, that's what I, that's what I said, so.
We, we come to the middle of that.
Yes.
1,250,000.
Yep.
Okay.
I would do that, yeah.
Yep.
And then I guess I'd look at your attorney and folks that know a lot more about this process and your process than I do, and say, is there a way to do that? But then give the executive's office or your staff the ability to increase that if it is not successful.
We could always come back, if the council approves 1.25 million, they don't give that money, we can always come back and ask for 1.5.
I'd rather have an extra meeting than throw out the 1.5.
That I would agree with there.
So tonight's night, so that, that will wordsmith it?
We need to substitute the number in the resolution for the up to, that's all we do.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Entertain a motion then.
So moved.
Second. The motion is, is that we will go to 1.25 million. They draft the resolution so that we hopefully get some participation from the Lee Roy McAllister Fund. If they do not, then we.
Requesting 250,000.
And if they do not, then we assemble again so that we don't lose this project so we can talk about it.
And you suspended the rules to do that?
I, my motion included suspending the rules.
I heard her say that, yes.
So who was the second on that?
Me.
Okay. Been moved and seconded that we suspend the rules and we pass Resolution 2024-15 with the stipulation of 1.25 million. And with, with encouragement to go and apply for 250,000 from Lee Ray McAllister Fund from the state of Utah.
Yep.
And then, then.
I believe we'll need that letter of support as well.
And then you'll need that letter of support written.
The, the letter's already written, it actually, this letter actually does not have the amount that's warranted.
It doesn't need an amount on it.
In the application.
Okay, we'll get that taken care of though. And that being the motion, is there any discussion on that emotion?
Nope, I'm very happy.
Good discussion.
Very good. Very good discussion. We're all, we're getting through, we're learning more and more every day and every time we look at each other.
COSAC, thank you for your guidance.
This is a, this is the purpose of what we did this and I think it is a wonderful thing. Now we could just get to the north end of the valley somewhere.
There yesterday, so.
Good. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So it is unanimous from the council and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, thank you for working through the process with us.
Now the work begins again, so. Yep, B and C are gone. Okay, let's go ahead and go down to 11D. Now you're, we do have a couple council members that have to leave for other events. 11D, ordinance 202409, amending the county code relating to the consumption of alcohol on county-owned property. Who's gonna talk about that? Bart will, okay.
Bart Esplin, Cache County Fairgrounds. Thank you for, for letting me come and talk with you tonight about this alcohol policy. We've had this ordinance in place for just over, nobody wants to listen to me speak. That's crazy.
No, sorry, Bart. Thanks for staying, I appreciate it. Boy, that was an excellent.
We've had this, this ordinance in place, or the amended ordinance in place for just, just over a year, I think. And we've come to discover some things about it. I, when we, when we initially drafted this ordinance, I knew that it was going to be a little bit of a work in progress. You, we, we don't know what we don't know, is, is what we're finding as we, as we work through some of this. The Utah Code on Alcohol is in excess of 300 pages long. And every time we would call down to their office, we would get conflicting answers on, on the best way for us to address what we was trying to do, which was really one of two things, allow private parties to be able to serve alcohol at their party, which is well-covered in this ordinance as it stands. The other thing we, we anticipated or wanted to do was to allow people to serve beer at more of a public event. The way, the way this is written and, and the way we anticipated working, it working was we asked for a single event permit, thinking that that covered 6, 5% beer. As we had, we've had now a few customers come in and, and wanting to do that at their events, we send them to the state to get this permit, they're coming back saying the state won't give us a single event permit, we have to have a temporary beer permit in order to be able to do that. So the way it's written now, they're okay to serve hard liquor, but they can't serve beer. So this change simply would make that an option for them to serve 5% beer at their event.
See, but we were going by what they were told us in the beginning.
Right.
On the event, on the, on the event permit.
Yep. And, and the literature that we had off their website, you know, some brochures and different things indicated that we was, we was gonna be, that we was going down the right path. But what we found out is we no need to, to add this other option in order to be, for those events to be able to serve beer.
So they'll serve beer or hard liquor or?
We've not had, we've not had any event request to ser, serve hard liquor.
Okay.
I don't really, I, I won't say it won't happen, but I think it's very unlikely that that's gonna happen. Most people are most interested in serving beer at their event. We've had three or four now that have come back to us with this dilemma. And my feeling is it's not, it's not their fault, they're doing everything that they can, so we've allowed those events to happen because it's really an error on our part.
Bart brought this before the Ordinance and Policy Review Council and they worked really hard on it. He and Cassidy. Cassidy. And so I think that I would give approval on it.
Were our attorneys present through all of that?
For some of that process, yes. But it's, it's an evolving standard, so just.
Yeah, Jairus, we've been working closely with Jairus throughout the process.
But you say it's evolving? Because there's, you're gonna, the state's gonna find more in their little, you know, when these, when people go to get that little, that permit, they're gonna say, oh, now you gotta do this, this, they go, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Yeah. That's, that's not been.
It's like county development.
That's, that's not been our experience as we've worked through these others that are just getting the temporary beer permit. It's, it's sailed through and, you know, it, they've not had any problem.
If I could say it more clearly, we're just trying to get it dialed in as best we can and trying not to let perfect be the enemy of the good, that we get something in place and if we need to tweak it later, we can make it better.
That's that impossibility of trying to mesh state codes with county codes and have them all work together, right? It's al, almost impossible, but not.
We're, we're working diligently.
I understand, I understand. No, I, I understand, because that's.
This will require some minor tweaks of our internal policy too, you know, on, on how we deal with our customers and stuff, but those are pretty much already written, redlined and it, it's a, that's an easy lift at, at this point.
Okay, any other questions you'd have of Bart? Anyone?
No.
Okay, this is, it is initial, so.
I'd be willing to suspend the rules and move that we pass ordinance 2024-09, amending chapter 5.08, .080 of the county code.
I'll second it.
Move and second it, that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 202409 on the ordinance amending chapter 5, 8, and 80 of the county code. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Bart. Thank you.
Have a good evening. Let's go to, actually, can we jump past E real quick? Because we gotta keep you anyway. So if you don't mind, if we could jump to F and I believe that, the, or you were taking care of that one too?
Yeah, it'd be really quick, I mean, it's.
Yeah, that's what I say, that this is that request for local consent?
An application, you guys have it, it's not published, it's not publicly available, but it's in your packets. An application for local consent that was submitted to the clerk's office for your consideration. Applicants are, are here, they're, if, if you would like to hear from them, I, I'm sure they.
Is there any questions on it though, that we have? You went through and you've done your diligence and getting that process taken care of and?
Yeah, through, yeah. Yeah, and then we sent over to the sheriff's office and Chad signed it, signed off on it, so now we just need your approval.
Boy, it looks like you paid for it too. Any, any questions? So entertain. Motion, go ahead and do whatever we need on this, whatever you feel.
Do we authorize the local consent, or is this? Oh, suspend the rules and authorize the.
I'll second it.
Move and second it, we suspend the rules and we authorize this request for local consent for the alcohol license in the county. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much. Our process is good. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thanks for coming and waiting.
Getting ice cream on the way home.
If you can find this for me.
Yeah. Okay, sorry about that, but thanks, Micah, being patient with us on that. I just know that they were about the last couple here.
Yeah, that was nice of you, thanks.
Yeah, they stayed through all that, so. Resolution 2024-14, the three-digit code.
Why it's not pulling up? Oh, I'll, it only pulls up two, two of the digits. Not sure what's going on there, all, all.
It says wife, internet instead of wifi.
Yeah, so, okay, so. I have, I have the ordinance, sorry, the resolution before me, but I, I have a, a number of amendments, which is why I'd really like to be able to pull it up so I can show you guys.
What number, what number is it?
Yeah, Resolution 2024-14. I did come before the council a few meetings ago and presented this. This is just kind of a, the. This is just kind of a, early in the state, earlier in the stages I presented this. So the, the Ordinance and Policy Review Committee has been reviewing this policy for a few months now. What this will do is essentially codify certain definitions for some, but not all, general ledger codes in the budget. So I want to emphasize that again. The resolution has a list, a table with, with three-digit codes. Each of these codes correspond to a line item in a departmental budget. This is not a list of every line item that is used throughout the county. Instead, these are the line items that exist across many or most departments in the county. Not all, but most. And so what this policy is doing is codifying the definitions for those line items. So for example, if you pull up the table in the resolution, the top one is Code 110 for full-time employees. Pretty simple. That's just the salaries and wages for full-time employees and county council members. Like I mentioned this last time, for whatever reason, in the county budget, you guys are considered full-time employees. And in many ways, you are full-time. This keeps you busy.
Thanks, Micah.
So, but I'll run the list, moving down a few lines. Travel, for travel expenses, hotel meals, mileage, airfare rentals. Some departments, and I would mention that including the council department, conference expenses, so we go to the UAC conference. Registration for that is paid out of travel. Under this policy, that would no longer be allowed. Under this policy, you would pay for it, a couple lines down, education and training, line 330.
Yep.
So what...
That's logical.
Most departments already do that. The council does not. The way, the way that we will solve that is we'll create a 330 line. We don't have one. But that's not really a big deal. What this policy will do is it will standardize the, some of these line items across departments. So we can compare, when we say, okay, the attorney's office is using this much for travel, the clerk's office is using this much, we know we're talking about the same thing. We know that we're not talking about registration for conferences or conventions in there. We're only talking about costs associated with travel. So let me try to reload this. The, so up to that point, are there, are there any questions?
Yeah, 620.
That's the miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous services.
Yeah.
Okay, I hate that.
You know, but I think, Dave, it's essential because it's impossible to line item every, every single little expense.
Yes, but it has been abused.
It has been.
I will flat-out say it has been abused in the past. But I think that if we can keep, I mean, that needs to be under control and not just to create, in the past, there has been a slush item. And they just threw it all miscellaneous, and I, we saw elevated numbers in miscellaneous items. You're, are you kidding me? And then when we started actually bringing it out, then all of a sudden, they started disappearing and started actually finding the homes that they needed to find.
So, if I...
But that's our responsibility as a council, anyway. We are to, we are to, you know, pressure on, on those things and make sure that money is spent where, and we know where it should fit.
And as OMP has talked about it, the intent was to keep it very low. I mean, in each budget that's proposed from each department, this category of 620 would be a very small number.
$15 or something like that.
Now, was there, I'm trying to find where the, this one here addresses the three-digit code, but doesn't address the other things that's still going through OMP on...
Transfers.
Transfers, things like that.
Yeah.
That's separate, right? Okay. That's still coming?
No. It, well, if you would like to, to move forward with that, we can make that happen. But what was decided was to actually just remove that from this policy.
I like that, committee.
And David, if I could also address the miscellaneous account, one thing that this policy does is it says, you look at the definition, any, any expenses that do not have another line item. So it would be inappropriate under this policy to, to travel somewhere and then charge it to the miscellaneous account, because you already have a line item for travel.
Oh, wow. We saw a lot of that.
And so that...
I'm glad.
We're still leaving that, that, the line item there, but we're, we're, at least in policy, not in practice, but as a legislative body, that's what you guys control, is policy. In policy, it will limit, should limit the use of that.
That your definition there also, what I really like about that is it basically tells even our county auditor, say, hey, this expense is not a bona fide county business. This expense, you know, this does have a home, you know? We'll be able to pick those things out and then educate, train, and change those departments that are misusing it, so...
Micah, I have a question, too, about that. So if we do a 620 miscellaneous services account, it should be within every single department? But there, I would say every department needs some place to put their miscellaneous, right?
Most departments have them. I don't think all, if you're talking about like an actual department of employees, I would say every one of those departments have them. There are some departments in the budget that are departments, but they're not, they're not operational or personnel departments. And so they, some of those don't necessarily have a miscellaneous line item.
And here's the reason I say that, because as you go through Casell, there are a couple of places that just say miscellaneous, like it's its own department.
There, yeah.
For 2023, when I looked, it had a budget of $30,000 in it. And there, it's just a dump fund. And so, like, nobody should be allowed to use that account if they have a miscellaneous within their department, I believe. But then, but I don't know, like, some of it was when, when all the transition in our finance department, there was some discrepancies in the payroll account, and they dumped those differences in there. And I don't know if there's a better place to have put those. But, but anyway, I don't like the idea of having a $30,000 miscellaneous account that every department has access to. And then you don't know who, like, you know what I mean? If they're gonna use a miscellaneous account, they need to have it within their own department so that you can see what differences they're, what are they spending money on that doesn't have a bona fide account, right?
The intent, at least from what I perceived from the OMP discussion, was on these three-digit codes, any of them, but specifically the miscellaneous service, you don't have to have a budget item for that.
Right.
But if you do have the need, meaning the department head feels like there is so many things that we'll, I'll call the minutia of running the budget, where they can't, there isn't an existing line item, or they can't pinpoint that I'll need money specifically for this, this year, but I have often, then they could utilize a 620 to fill that gap. But again, it would be very minimally funded. They don't have to have one, and the incursion would be not to have one.
And everybody needs a little, like, you can't always say that you know exactly what's gonna happen and everything. Like, you don't want to make department heads feel like they can't function. But, but that, like you said, it should be so minimal. But the point I'm making is it should be contained within the department that's using it and not dumped into a central miscellaneous fund.
No, definitely no one.
Each one, each of these, these codes is centralizing the terminology and the use of the money in the line item. But a 620 in the Rose Department would be a 620, and the value would be only for the Rose Department.
Yes.
Yeah, there is, and this, this policy doesn't change this. There is very little control mechanisms beyond it being found after the fact when it comes to, particularly when you're talking about purchasing with credit cards, making a purchase and being able to assign it to... I can make a purchase with a county credit card and assign it to that miscellaneous department. And any employee, to my knowledge, any employee in the county with that credit card can make a purchase and assign it to that miscellaneous department. And there really aren't internal controls that I'm aware of other than the auditor or finance finding that after the fact and saying, hey, this is...
We need to get to that point. We really do.
Yeah, anything, I would say if that fund, if we can't get rid of that fund, first of all, we can control how much is budgeted in it. It doesn't need to be $30,000, I don't think. But, but maybe it does, like, I could be convinced. But I don't see that. But then we could set a resolution that says anything that's put into that miscellaneous account has to go through the finance department, has to be okayed by finance, that it legitimately can go into that account. Or, and like you say, it's after the fact, but if they see it as it's going in, then it can be moved to the appropriate department, or it can be addressed at the time, and then we move on and do better, right?
Yeah.
That's, that's kind of how I feel about it.
Yeah. Yeah, we can, we can work on something like that. We've talked about amending the purchasing policy, and I think that would simply be part of the purchasing policy.
The thing I was gonna say is we're gonna be, there's gonna be a purchasing policy committee of some sort coming together.
Yep.
That control should be at that level for what is an appropriate use of the credit card and what isn't. What has to be pre-approved versus what could be on the fly and then categorized, but categorized correctly after the fact.
Now, I, I have some amendments to this, that some of them are downright necessary. Others are at your discretion. Before I, Wes, did you have...
I wanted to talk just real briefly on credit cards and on fuel, on the controls there.
Yeah. That's, that's a huge...
So it'll just, I'll just be real brief. So when it comes to credit cards, department heads are ultimately accountable to review those transactions and sign off on them. And so, you know, if their card's being used, again, they have to be accountable for it. When it comes to fuel tax, I'm having the departments sign off on their fuel bill. Even though we get one fuel bill, I want the departments to specifically sign off, because I really can't necessarily have a grasp on what they're doing operationally. They've got to verify that number and say, yeah, that makes sense. And so I've got my staff currently, I'm not signing off on like the fuel bills until all the department heads sign off on their portion. So there are some controls that we're implementing around that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wes. Speaking of fuel, right now, it goes like, when, when the fuel is, people that we pay for their fuel, it goes into the travel, but this doesn't say anything about, about fuel. Where would you put the fuel? Is that one of your amendments?
That's one of my, you're, you're one step ahead of me there, Sandy. So let me go through the, some of the amendments. I, I don't even know if I want to call them recommendations. These are, I met with Wes and a couple of employees in the finance office this morning, and they, they made some suggestions, and I'll go through them. Others come from just me reviewing this. I, I wrote this, but there's some changes, some ways I think we can make this better. The first actually came from Amy in OMP, and then I completely forgot to implement the suggestion she made. Line 142, changing that from page or pay to on-call time. That, that reflects a change the council made earlier this year, where page or pay was replaced by on-call time. And then I added the reference to the PPP manual in the definition itself, on-call time is defined. And then, and actually, the travel one, I'm gonna skip till we get to the fuel one. The next one down, okay, so these two were recommendations from finance. These are two additional lines that are currently being used in some budgets. They're pretty similar to one another. The first is 260 for building and grounds. This is a line item that exists only in departments that are housed outside of this campus, so the courthouse and the admin building. And it's how they, it's their expenditures for their building and grounds, maintenance expenditures for their department. The one local campus department that does have that line item is building and grounds. And, and it's for their maintenance of this building and the admin building. Similar story with utilities in 270. These are departments that are housed outside, expenses for utilities. If a department is housed in this building or next door, they don't have that line item. Again, except for Dennis's department, building and grounds. They have that utilities and the paid utilities for these two buildings. Communication, yeah, typo, it said cell phones, landlines, ISDN, long-distance calls, wife internet. My wife is probably in favor of that policy. Call her more often.
Spell check can really get you in trouble.
It's probably best if the calls to my wife were, were paid for by my own phone bill. So that will, I recommend place that with wifi. So fuel is, and this gets to your question, Sandy. This is another expense that is, it's distinct from travel. So the fuel line item is for fuel expenses that are related to regular operations. So the sheriff department, Public Works, two big ones, not the only ones, but two big ones. They're expending fuel just as part of their normal, you know, they're, they're driving the patrol cars, driving the dump trucks and snowplows around. That's not travel, but it is fuel. And that's distinct from what we have in the travel budget, which I clarified here. That would, so if, if instead, if one of you takes a vehicle, or even takes your own vehicle and drives down to St. George for a UAC conference, you'll be, you'll be reimbursed for your mileage, and that will come out of the travel line.
Yeah.
So, so if somebody like the sheriff, who is consistently putting gas in his car, and he decides he needs to go to St. George, he can still turn and say, I went 400 miles, or whatever it is, round trip, and that portion can be attributed, or, because to me, that gets kind of, how would you do that?
I asked that question of, of finance, and they said it would, it would still go under fuel. If you're using a county vehicle, it would still go under fuel. It's, it's, the travel is only for the mileage reimbursement.
Oh, okay, so if we took a county vehicle, it would just go under fuel?
Yep. So actually, if I go, and, and this, I need to check with Janine, because, and in fact, it, Janine, but then eventually the fleet manager or fleet coordinator. Right now, I think those expenses are coming out of travel. When I take a county vehicle down to Salt Lake during the session, I think that's coming out of travel. That's not coming out of fuel. But I think under this policy, it would need to come out of fuel.
Yeah.
But we don't have, the council doesn't have a fuel, a fuel line item, so maybe we need one. But we'll need to clear that up with Janine and with finance, because I think those, those vehicles out there are treated a little differently than the patrol cars and...
No, they're treated the same. They just sit there.
Nobody drives.
Well, and I would say we could budget those, I don't know where the budget's sitting for those. Maybe it's sitting in executive, because this space here, I would assume. And again, it's open to probably have county employees use it. I think we want them to utilize that, because it comes at a lower cost than giving them probably per diem.
My understanding of how it works with those vehicles, the kind of pool vehicles, is that there is a gas card. When, so when I take one of those vehicles and I fill up on gas, I then give that receipt to Janine. And she, she is the one that puts in the information accounts for it in Visa spend clarity. But then she'll take it out of, because it came from me, a council employee, she'll take it out of the council travel budget. And, and so...
It actually should come out of a fuel budget.
Yes, maybe we need to add a fuel line to our budget.
Okay. It needs to come out of the fuel budget. So, so we will need to add a fuel line to, to our, our budget.
So in practice, we, if this gets adopted soon, then we would, would we do a budget opening and then re-categorize a lot of the existing year's budget? Or wait until next year?
That gets to the last, that gets to the last recommended amendment. And this also came from finance, is to make it, make this policy take effect beginning of next year's budget. So we, we would simply, under this change, under this amendment, we wouldn't need to worry about a budget opening or anything. So that's the list of amendments I have. You guys can pick and choose which ones, of course.
I wonder if we ought to have incorporated into the document, and the next time we ought to...
It is initial, and so we'll just, is that okay? I like that. I think it's wonderful. I think this, that's exactly, we're heading in the right direction. I think this kind of accounting, we set these things up, I think it's very auditable. You know, in other words, it easily be audited, and it's, there's, and then if everyone's on the same page, kind of thing, I think that's, that's exactly what we've been trying to get, and rather than just these little, you have this, and you have that, and, and, I don't know. It's just, this here, it's harder to actually have money lose identity. And we're hoping that, that... And we're hoping that it never, it gets into that place and then stays its identity. And then if there is any changes, then it has, then it does come through us to make those changes, which I think forces departments to actually stay within a budget too, you know? Shop a little, become prudent.
So, so without taking about, is that, you guys prefer to, I can make, I can implement all these amendments?
Yeah. Put, put those in it and, and put it back on there for, you know.
For two weeks, yeah.
In two weeks, and we'll get, we'll get two more bodies here to actually vote on it too, and we'll, we'll get it taken care of.
Okay.
I think we need to give Micah a big thank you, he's worked really hard on this.
Say he has.
And we appreciate it very much. And Wes, thanks for your input on all of this, it's been so valuable.
I, I just, I love how, you know, like the sheriff mentioned earlier, that's, you guys, you sit down and you work, you're working on things and you're open, you're laying things out on the table and there's nothing, nothing to hide and let's get it fixed and let's do it right. That's what I think's, we're getting back to that Cache County culture that we, that we had years ago, and it's just that openness, that's what we need, and that's just, I think it's wonderful.
Yep.
Related about it, but we had to go through a lot of hard times to get there, but we're getting there and I appreciate that so much, so, okay.
I have a question for Wes, before we, because of this expense report that we were sent. A couple, I thought, I saw a couple of items and I thought, I wonder what that is? So I went back to the department that it was coded to to look for it. And they were dated like June twenty-fourth in here, but when I found the actual expense, it was done in April. Is it, what is the la, and, and, which is perfectly probably acceptable, I just wanna make sure I understand what the process is when the credit card bills come in and they're paid, how far back are we? Like, how much more for June is still yet to come in?
I think I'd have to just look at the particular transactions to give you a lot of detail. It'd be hard for me to, to comment without.
But in general, it's, the bill is paid once a month, twice a month, how, how often do we pay?
So the credit card's paid once a month.
Once a month, okay, and then what, so the dates on this, some of them are June seventh, some are June fourteenth. How do you allocate those dates on that?
So I don't, I don't know if accounts payable is entering those dates based on when the transaction occurs or if they're entering them based on a statement date. I'm not sure.
But the statement's only once a month and there's like.
Right.
Different dates in June, so I just.
It seems to me that it's probably some transactions from say end of April to, you know, maybe towards the end of May that are paid in June.
Okay.
But.
Then that's very likely what it is, I just wanted to understand, like, so things that are being spent in June, we haven't got the, probably haven't got the statement yet either.
Right. And if you, if you wanna, if you have some questions on specific transactions, shoot me an email. And then I can always respond, you know, to, to you specifically or the council as a whole to so you know exactly what it is.
Okay, and I didn't even question the transaction itself, it was just the date, when I wanted to go back and look at it, I had to go clear back to April in their budget to find.
And I know.
So that was just.
I know as part of the audit, they'll go in and they'll look at unrecorded liabilities. So things that occurred prior to year end, but that maybe got recorded on a date in January, they'll go in and correct those as part of the audit if, if it, if it gets overlooked. But throughout the year, we may not have, we may not show as much focus on, on those dates, per se, if that makes sense.
I just have one quick question. Thought it related to maybe one of our county council meetings. On page five, there's a, there was a payment made to Looney Times Incorporated for three thousand dollars.
You know what it is?
Yeah, it's a costume for a.
For the Cheese and Dairy Festival.
But I, I saw Looney Times.
And, and.
Caught my attention.
And I've heard, I've heard about that a few times from numerous staff saying, should we be doing this? Should we not? So, but it was approved in the budget, is my understanding, so.
No, I, I was trying to make it.
Yeah.
Late, the late hour joke and it didn't go.
Okay.
Thanks, Wes.
Any council member report, Smart?
Let's see, just a couple of things, you saw when the sheriff was making his presentation, I think this podium's pretty small. Maybe we oughta look at getting something that somebody could put their laptop on without fighting the microphone, et cetera. I don't know what the budget item we'd put that in, but I think.
Miscellaneous.
I keep seeing.
Right.
But I, I think it's cumbersome to work around that microphone, et cetera. I think it could be useful. Micah, you've dealt with your iPad or laptop on there and it's tight.
Yeah, yeah, this room has a lot of techno, technological challenges. Just talk to Bart, he'll fill you in, this is all, the whole building not meant for the technology that we need. But yeah, I mean, as far as.
Just simply a podium that's just.
Yep.
A little bit wider or whatever.
You know, they're trying to set it and they're trying to look at something else and it's just, you know, for someone that wants to do a presentation, they don't have any room to do the presentation.
If that's a council budget thing, we shop for it and we take care of it if we, it just seems like it would be a user-friendly invitation for people to come and make presentations in a situation where they're probably already, most, most folks aren't comfortable, you know, it's a little, brings the nerves and so, one less thing to trip over, you know what I mean? So, anyway, let's see. Updates, we did hold the Cache, or the County Economic Opportunity Board meeting last week. There was some presentation, Sandy, you picked up on it with the Airport Authority report being one of the line items that we talked about and then the handful of other things that, couple of action items that'll be coming towards the council, but I won't bring those up till they're ready for the formal presentation, but we can talk about them afterwards if you'd like. And then we did hold a library board meeting last week as well and, which was held in the River Heights City Building, and there was more discussion about the availability of the old elementary school that the city of River Heights is currently is willing to make available to the library, Cache County Library, if we so chose to go in a direction where we would be seeking larger capacity, et cetera. In short, the board's response to all that was the same as it has been for the last couple of meetings, which is, if we were going to do any expanding, it would make sense for it to be to a north location rather than just changing locations from one location in Providence to one location in the River Heights, but not really reach anyone in addition in the valley where, again, there's a lot of, a lot of folks just don't even know there's a, they have access to a county library. I don't have them in front of me.
That, that's challenging because you've got, uh, North Logan has a really good library, you've got Smithfield, it's got a really good library, and the communities that are lacking are the smaller outline communities and that's.
Built theirs over here.
Yeah. Mark, I have a question, and I don't know if you know the answer to this. If somebody came to the, I don't know if you'd actually have to come to the facility, but somehow got a library card for the county library, do they have access to on, the online like Libby or, you know, some of the downloads that they wouldn't have to actually go to the location?
Right, yeah, they had, the county library offers access to digital media.
See, maybe we can do some kind of public outreach or some, to make sure that people, especially in the outline areas.
That's exactly where I was going.
Okay.
When I was about to wrap up, which would include.
Sorry?
The numbers for users on the digital media have doubled in the last two years. And so there's a, a strong trend of, to support the very thing you're mentioning, Sandy. And also announced at this board meeting last week was that the county library now has an Instagram page. You could follow them if you'd like, just as one other way for public outreach, but. There was some discussion also about, you know, what, what is, what does the library, what does the Cache County Library wanna be in five years, ten years? And there'll be more to come on that, I think, as far as, well, let me step back. The contract between Cache County and Providence City and River Heights City is in need of updating. It has, it's been since ninety-eight, since that document was revised. I think it's, not that it's a bad document, but I think in practice there are some things that are a little different that we would want to look to make sure that our documentation matches what's best in the best practices that are taking place there, so. There will be some updating there with the executive's office and, and the library board. I know we're gonna talk about it specifically here, but I plan to do the North Logan Parade tomorrow and then so long as I can make it in time, I'd love to jump on the wagon with y'all if I can. But getting, getting through to Logan in time is gonna be tough.
It's a tall, tall wagon.
Yeah. So anyway, I'll try to line up for that, but, and we did participate in the Hyde Park Parade and it was well received, the county was represented there, so.
Thanks for doing that.
Taylor was kind enough to ride along with me so I didn't look like alone. Our kids had a good time.
Good.
How's it?
Robert?
I just, I met with the sheriff and I just, I am just very pleased with the budget, the way the budget is going. Yes, we still have a lot of work to do, but I think the sheriff for being right on top of things and, and making his presentation and same way with Public Works. Like I said, we still have work to do, but it's an awesome procedure now. I think we're making headway on where we're going and what we're doing. Policy and ordinance and policy review committee, I think we're really making some good headway on a lot of things and Carl and Mark and Micah and all the other members of the committee have been a tremendous help with that. We are still, probably one of our major ones is what Taylor brought up last meeting, is our contract policy. We have got to get that going because we just need to make sure everything's in line with our contracts. And right now, nobody seems to know where anything is on it, so. And Bryson, that's probably something we'll need some help with from you on, so. And I appreciate your willingness to do that. Other than that, see you tomorrow at the parade.
We had an audit committee meeting last week.
Go ahead, I was gonna mention that.
You know what?
You carried it away.
Well, I, I left early, but the outside auditor is ready to present to us. We had a good audit this year, they found nothing substantial, there's a couple of recommendations.
Couple of recommendations for them.
Did you, did you wanna, like, when did they decide to present to us, do we know?
Next week, next time.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's it for me, I'll see you tomorrow at the parade.
And that's all I had to discuss?
Oh, sorry.
No, no.
That's all I had to.
No.
So, so the auditor is gonna be presenting, there were a few findings that we wanted council to read through and be familiar with in advance of the meeting. The auditor was planning on actually presenting on August thirteenth because we wanted you to have time to look at the findings and digest them. So you're not surprised.
Appreciate that.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
I don't have anything. I will see you at the parade tomorrow.
And again, thanks for pulling those.